And I'm going to call the common council meeting for Monday, April 6th, order. Just as a matter of reminder, if you can have yourselves on mute when you're not talking, that certainly helps with feedback. If at any point you can't hear me or one another, this is our SOS. If for some reason your sound cuts out, I did send to you all in the Word document, you can just call into the line and then it'll connect your square on the screen with you as a phone caller. So if push comes to shove, you do have that as an option. We will not be able to do the YouTube Live this evening. There was an upgrade to YouTube that is not connecting with our system. So we are recording this meeting. It will go on the channel as it always does, and then we will post the video as well. We did advertise the call-in phone number, so if anyone is interested in attending the meeting, they still do have a way to do that. So with that, Alyssa, will you please call the roll?
Muddler?
Here.
Portomasi?
Yes.
Britton?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Oldhouse?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Tim?
Here.
Um?
Here.
Phil?
Here.
And will you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
States of America, to the Republic of America, for which it stands, nation, God, invisible, liberty, and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the minutes of the council meeting from March 17th. Are there any comments or questions for those minutes? Okay. Next is comments and suggestions from citizens present. Chief Kaminsky's going to help us moderate any citizens wishing to comment.
Do you have any citizens that wish to comment right now?
Okay. Seeing none, if we missed you by chance, you can certainly type a message in the comment box, and we will make sure to come back to you at the end of the meeting. Next is committee reports. We have the Finance Committee from March 31st. Any questions or comments on those minutes? Okay. Old Business, we have nothing. Next is Communications and Recommendations. Typically at this meeting, we would be recognizing the service of our outgoing older people. Considering our means of doing meetings right now, it seemed only right that we would postpone this item. We will have a special ceremony as we always do when we are all able to be back together again. So if you were chomping at the bit to get your plaque, let me know, and we'll get it to you somehow. Otherwise, we will make sure that we bring you all back, and be in one room together, and honor you for the service that you've provided to our community. We will be sure to solicit dates with you all to make sure that it works well for you. Next is a COVID-19 update. I am going to switch my screen. Well, I'll see if I can make it small. I should have printed this, so that I can provide some updates to everyone. Bear with me a second. Well, I'm just gonna have to flip back and forth. So I'm sorry for anyone watching the screen. So first things first, take this. Yeah, I'm gonna take that, and do that. Okay, so updates for everybody, and I won't be able to see your faces during this, so just bear with me as I work through the items on the screen. And if you had something, I'll try to go slow as I move through, and we can answer any questions that you may have. So first off, updates for today. We still have one positive case in the city of Watertown. We are actively monitoring 65, and we have monitored and released 93. That is, as of today, we are posting every day around 2 o'clock the number of positive cases in the city. That is on both the website and the city Facebook page. I'm sure many of you saw the changes back and forth with the governor's office today and the legislature and the courts on the election. We were made aware around noon that the order was coming from the governor to postpone the election date until sometime in June, and then pretty much instantly after that, we're aware of the planned appeal from the Republican Party. And we received, I don't even, probably late this afternoon, the update that the governor's order was overturned. We planned to run the election the entire time. As a matter of fact, as these things were coming in, we were running around to polling locations and measuring six feet on the floor from where we have tape. So I want to assure you all, and assure anyone that watches this meeting back, I'm sitting here in the council chambers, and it has everything sitting in front of me that we've all collectively worked on. And we have done everything we can think of to make this election as safe as we possibly can. So there will be indicators on the floor that are six feet from the chair, and six feet from a person standing to their either side, and six feet from the booth that would stand near them. We, through the help of engineering, building, safety, and zoning, and the street department, built nearly 40 election shields. The Health Department has done a lot of signage. We've procured nearly, I think, probably around 5,000 pens from area businesses, so that we're using one-use pens. We also will have curbside voting for anyone who needs it, and that is for people who are compromised or who are ill. There are signs telling them a phone number to call. We have done hand sanitizer. Watertown Hops provided us hand sanitizer, and Domani Salon and Spa provided us bottles to put that hand sanitizer in, so we ensured that each one of our workers had hand sanitizer. And we obviously have that at the entrance and exits to all of the polling locations. I do want to let you know that we will have the National Guard here. We had our list. We upended everyone on that list besides six people out of the 40, or 50, 60, somewhere in there. Only six could remain, based on the vulnerable population and the guidelines from the CDC. So we procured a new list of folks, and today, and late last week, that list, after training them, has started to dwindle. Minute by minute, people were dropping out. And as the offer came for the National Guard to staff the election, I connected with the county today, and they connected with folks at the State Emergency Operations Center, and through the National Guard, we've been working with local Major Trevor Thomas, and he has been working with us to ensure that we have workers. So 41 members of the National Guard will be working our polling locations tomorrow. I did put that out on social media today, just so that people are aware of the polling locations looking and operating a little bit differently. But just in case you guys get questions too, just know that's where that's coming from. We have issued out 4,623 absentee ballots. Just under 3,700 of those have been returned. 932 are not returned, and normally we have just over 12,000 registered voters. So right now, that is about 38% registered voters that have voted absentee. We have connected with every channel I can think of to try to get a feel for if this is done, or if there's another iteration of cancellations and appeals that will come yet tonight. And there's only one potential card that's still up in the air, and so I feel somewhat confident to say that we're, I feel 100% confident to tell you, we are planning to do an election tomorrow. One thing may change that, and we'll see if that card is played. It's obviously well beyond our control. But you rest assured that we have done everything that we can to make sure that this election goes off as safely as it possibly can. Let's see. We did establish the hotline number from the last time I spoke with you. We are doing surge planning. The Health Department and the hospital has been working on surge planning. They have surge plans. They have, you know, mass fatality plans. They have all these plans, and they've been operationalizing and checking in on all components of those plans. We connect with Jefferson County's EOC three times a week, so we're in a network of healthcare providers, public health departments, and municipalities and governments to ensure that everyone is working towards planning for our surge potentially in our community. I would say, you know, safer at home is going fairly well, and I look at the chief when I say that. You know, we have taken an approach, and Alderperson Marone can attest to this, we have taken an approach of just being proactive, and when we're in doubt, just erring on the side of health. So in our business community has been responsive to that. As the weather gets warmer, as it has been the last couple of days, we have seen an increase of people starting to kind of hang out outside in parks, and we could use all of your help in messaging that now's not the time to be hanging out at the park. We're removing our park benches and kind of clustering them together so that folks aren't congregating in the parks in mass groups. But otherwise, I would say, I feel like we've had a pretty good response from our community. We'll see how long that wears on, but for now, we've had a pretty good response. And we've been working a lot with our partners at the Chamber of Commerce, the Main Street Program, Jefferson County Economic Development, and the Greater Watertown Community Health Foundation, in order to ensure that our business community is being supported by getting the information and the resources that they need. I do want to let you know, in case you weren't aware, there is a PPE buyback program that's being advertised through the Department of Health Services. If you are interested in sharing that in your network, I would greatly appreciate it, and so would our first responders. We need PPE. We need it. And we are advertising and asking for it through every possible channel. But if you feel like you have a connection to people that, either business or personal, that have access to PPE, please connect with myself, or with Carol, or with Craig. Craig's managing the PPE for us right now, and we are going to be in need of PPE very, very soon. I want you to know, I was asked to provide some information to the National League of Cities to kind of help tell the story about revenues. You guys have heard me talk about that. We are projecting, at this point, Alyssa took a look at the revenue streams, and she's estimating that we will be around a 5% loss of revenues across all funds. That amounts to just under $2.2 million. Now, that's a guess, and that is with us watching where we're at so far, and having the department has kind of tried to estimate where they would be at this point in the year. So we will continue to monitor that, but for anyone who will be with us through the rest of the year, please know that that is something we are going to have to tackle when we come out of this storm. The offices at City Hall remain closed. They will remain, I'm sorry, the all cities, city offices remain closed to visitors, and they will be for the foreseeable future. Once this election finishes up, the in-person voting finishes up tomorrow, we'll be making some choices about access to City Hall. That's been open for absentee voting, so you may see a change there. Right now, we still are having, you know, over half the workforce is working from home. We will have a few more that will, after the election is all shored up, that will move to that style of work as well. And then lastly, I just want to share that it is National Public Health Week this week. So if you haven't had a chance to thank our Health Department, this is the week to do it. So please make sure that you shoot them an email, give them a call, and just let them know how much you appreciate the work they do year-round, and in particular, this week during National Public Health Week. Are there any questions from anybody on the city's response to COVID?
I have a question. Or I hope that you can speak to the changes with the street department. I know that we're picking up trash and recycling on schedule, and there's been a change at the yard waste site. I know a lot of people have started to clean up their yards. Do you want to go over that?
Sure. So we had a discussion in our EOC about the yard waste site, knowing that people would be at home more and have the capacity to, you know, have some time to clean up their yards. But we also knew that the governor's order was for people to stay at home. So they're only supposed to leave home for essential services and essential needs, and we would be not compliant with that order if we were opening the yard waste site for people to go to the site. So knowing that, and knowing, we wanted to make sure we could still meet the service. What we are offering and what we've shared through all of our communication channels is that we will come to them. So we're following the brush route schedule for yard waste pickup. And there's a nice chart on the city website and on the Facebook page that helps people understand what needs to be in a bag and what doesn't need to be in a bag, and there is no specificity to that bag. It can be any bag. So we are trying to provide as many services as we can, just in a little bit different way. Any other questions? Okay. Next on the agenda is New Business, and then Accounts Payable. Will there be a motion for the accounts?
I'll make a motion to pay the accounts payable.
Motion by Alderperson Marone. Was there a second? I missed it.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Larson. Thank you. Questions on the accounts? Alyssa? Do you have her muted?
Anything?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Marone?
Oh, we dropped Alderperson Marone. Alyssa, will you continue with the roll, and we'll see if caller eight is Alderperson Marone?
Can you hear me now?
Is that Alderperson Marone?
It is. I lost the online connection. I'm on the telephone right now.
Okay, so he's caller eight. So Alderperson Marone, we were just calling the roll for the accounts payable. We were actually just on you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hope?
Aye.
Adler?
Upstate.
Portomasi?
Aye.
Britton?
Upstate.
Carson?
Aye.
Oldhouse?
Aye.
Okay. Next, oh, is that everybody? Okay. Next is reports on miscellaneous business. We have the Airport Commission from February 12th, payroll summaries from March 11th to 24th, and the Transit Commission from March 31st. Does anyone have any comments or questions on any of those minutes? It's much different to look through all of your squares. I feel like I'm on the Brady Bunch. Okay, then let's move on to ordinances. Our first is ordinance 20-11. This is to amend Chapter 550 of the zoning code through removal of language and the addition of language in a table to Section 550-123E, Print 3. This is about fencing standards and the maximum height. This is here from me and the Plan Commission on the second reading.
I will move to approve 20-11 on the second reading.
Motion by Larson, seconded by...
Barry?
Muddler. Second by Muddler.
Um.
I see Muddler too. I think you both might have gone. So we have a motion by Larson, a second by Muddler. Questions or comments on this one? Alyssa?
Carson?
Aye.
Oldhouse?
Aye.
Baker?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Marone?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Muddler?
Aye.
Portomasi?
Aye.
Britton?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is ordinance 20-12, and this is to amend Section 453-8, Print A, Print 3C, Stormwater Service charges of Chapter 453, Stormwater Management, and amend Section 508-12A, delinquency of Chapter 508 wastewater facilities. This is here from me on the first reading.
I will move to approve it on the first reading.
Motion by Marone?
I'll second. All the question, Wether?
Seconded by Wether. Thank you, that's helpful. Questions or comments?
I have a question. It doesn't say in there the specified change to the amount. Is that aliterating by us, or is that going to be a defined amount and change?
It is just allowing us to waive that, it gives us the flexibility to waive the late fee, in particular during the pandemic. So it's waiving its fatality.
Okay, so it's waiving the fee for the period of time we're under this situation?
Correct.
Okay.
Can you remember first off?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, we're just moving the fees to the fee schedule, and currently the fee schedule has no amount listed for the late fees. So until we set that fee schedule resolution, there is no late fees involved, once this is passed. And this is the first reading, and are we going to discuss that perhaps at this point?
Yeah, I was considering the situation that we're operating under now. I would be interested to know if the council is open to waiving our reading requirement and doing the second reading tonight as well.
Yes, I will move along with that.
Was it Alderman Marone, were you making a motion to adjust our rules and do the second reading tonight as well?
That is correct.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Muddler will second.
Seconded by Muddler. Does everyone understand that? Okay.
So let's take, can we usually typically vote on the original before the first reading, before we make a motion to go to the second reading?
No, I think we're fine doing it this way. Rose, are we fine taking a vote here, and then voting on the big ordinance, or how do you want to do it?
So I lost, sorry, I'm not great at this. So I lost the first motion, the primary motion was for the ordinance. Is that correct?
The first was for the first reading of the ordinance. And now Alderman Marone has made a motion to essentially do them both this evening.
So we're voting on the first reading first, and we're gonna have a second reading. We're gonna vote on the second hearing separate, is that right?
We have a new motion. We haven't voted on the first reading.
Okay. I think for Alyssa's sake, we should do the vote on the first, and then we need the vote on the second as well, just for record-keeping purposes.
That's fine.
I'll take back the motion to waive the rules. We'll just go back to the original ordinance on the first reading.
Okay. Does anyone have a question about the ordinance? All right, let's call the roll on the ordinance and its first reading. Alyssa?
Um?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Adler?
Aye.
Portomasi?
Aye.
Britton?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Oldhouse?
Aye.
Baker?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carried.
No. Marone will make a motion to suspend the rules and have the second reading voted on this evening.
Thank you.
Muddler will second again.
It was a motion by Marone and seconded by Muddler. Questions or comments? Alyssa?
Marone?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Adler?
Aye.
Portomasi?
Aye.
Britton?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Oldhouse?
Aye.
Baker?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. All right, then let's go on to, thank you, everyone. Let's go to resolutions. Our first is Resolution 8981, and this is a resolution to enter into a three-year agreement for crushing at the quarry.
To Larson, I'll move to for approval of 8981.
Motion by Larson.
Schmidt, I'll second.
Seconded by Schmidt. What's nice is this highlights whichever box talks the strongest, so it's an easier way of getting seconds to motions. Any questions on this one? Alyssa?
Carson?
Aye.
Oldhouse?
Aye.
Baker?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Marone?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Adler?
Aye.
Portomasi?
Aye.
Britton?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next is Exhibit 8982, and this is a resolution to approve the purchase of portable and mobile radios for the fire department. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
Sure, I will, it's Muddler, motion for 8982, please.
Motion by Muddler?
Schmidt, I'll second.
Seconded by Britton. Any questions on this one? Alyssa?
Adler?
Aye.
Portomasi?
Aye.
Britton?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Oldhouse?
Aye.
Baker?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Marone?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. Next is Exhibit 8983. This is a resolution to purchase two new 2020 Ford police squad SUVs. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
I'll push Wether on move. I'll move for 8983. Portomasi, second.
Motion by Wether, seconded by Portomasi. Any questions on this one? Alyssa?
Baker?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Marone?
Upstate.
Phil?
Aye.
Adler?
Aye.
Portomasi?
Aye.
Britton?
Aye.
Motion carried. Larson?
Aye.
Oldhouse?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. Next is Exhibit 8984. This is a resolution to amend the City of Watertown Employee Handbook to include a Families First compliance policy. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
Larson, I'll move to approve 8983. Not sorry, 8984.
Motion by Larson.
Portomasi, second.
Thank you. Seconded by Portomasi. Any questions or comments on this one? Alyssa?
Larson?
Aye.
Oldhouse?
Aye.
Baker?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Marone?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Adler?
Aye.
Portomasi?
Aye.
Britton?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next is Exhibit 8985. This is a resolution to update the 2020 payroll resolution to adjust pay grade for wastewater department crew leaders. This is a resolution to update the 2020 payroll resolution to adjust pay grade for wastewater department crew leader from grade H to grade A. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
I'll move to approve, it's Muddler, 8985 on its first reading.
Motion by Muddler.
Schmidt? I'll second.
Seconded by Schmidt. Any questions or comments on this one?
I'd like to comment. I'm going to vote against this. There's, um... It's hard for me not to give pay increases or to honor a request for a pay increase for our workers. And I question why we didn't, maybe the city attorney can answer this, what I've done. We, Finance, prior to the last city council meeting, approved a raise for two administrators, the city clerk and the, the director of the Health Department, very hardworking, deserving people. But they were substantial raises, out of cycle. And it was a split vote on Finance, two for and two against, with the mayor breaking the vote. And it was the same on these two. The issue that I have is not the wording as to the employees, but the fact that we're, we're in such a tight budget that we're cutting, we're cutting services to the city. And we're cutting, especially in the Streets Department, we're cutting services. And I think if we're in a mode where we're having to reduce services to the taxpayers, that we shouldn't be taking additional funds out and giving raises in an off-cycle. There are opportunities, and when we set the budget up, we set it up to accommodate certain pay, and that's how it's set. And then months into the year, to come in and make these, we can give raises, is difficult for me to justify when we're cutting services. Any other time, if we weren't faced with that, I don't see that there would be a problem. And, Rose, this is to the city attorney. Why is it that we, we have a resolution here for these two pay increases, but at the last council meeting, when you gave, was, I'm guessing it was in excess of $10,000 in raises to sell the people? We didn't have to see it in resolution. Is it because they're hourly, or what's the difference? Why didn't we have a resolution on those?
Um, I'm actually going to ask the city clerk to mention by the difference. Alyssa, would you like to answer to that? You can speak to this better than I can.
The Finance Committee typically decides, um, during, typically decides what step on the table someone is. And the two raises that were given to the deputy clerk and the health officer were only steps across. The council does a pay resolution near the beginning of each year, and that sets the grade. So what we're requesting here, what is being requested by that department, is a grade change, not a step change.
Okay. I see that.
Did that, did that explain the question?
Sure. Because if it's a step change, it doesn't need to come to council. If it's a grade change, it has to. That's how it's written. That's how it goes written.
A grade change changes the, the pay resolution. So we have to amend the pay resolution if there's a reclassification of the grade that the position is in.
And I, I can add a little bit of background information as well. These positions, this one in particular, is coming out of the wastewater budget. So that would be a separate budget from any of the services. And I, I believe, I'm not sure, Alderperson Larson, but you may be able to help, help clarify if I'm not on, on, on the right page. But I'm, I'm guessing the services you're referring to are some of the fee schedule changes with solid waste and some of the drop-off material and recycling material. If that is the case, that too is its own separate budget. So the solid waste budget, where fees at the Streets Department and garbage and recycling rates and appliance disposal rates, all of those things are in the solid waste budget, so that too would be outside of the general fund budget. Just for some background information. Are there any other comments or questions? Uh, Alyssa?
Muddler?
Aye.
Portimasi?
Aye.
Britton?
Aye.
Larson?
No.
Holt House? Aye. Baker?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Marone?
Um, we may have lost Bill according to... Okay. We may have lost Bill at some point. Sorry, Alyssa.
Kels? Without Marone, motion carried, six-two.
Thank you. Um, one other item that probably is good to mention, um, I believe this, and Pete, I think is still there. I believe these were budgeted, just so that, there's a few of them that were built into people's budgets. And I'm, I told them they needed to come back before you all with those, even though that they were built into their budgets. So for, of the ones you've seen, they were planned. Pete, is that correct? Got it. Okay. Uh, all right. So next is 8986. This is a resolution to update the 2020 payroll resolution to reclassify our city attorney legal assistant position to paralegal. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
I'll move to approve, Alderperson Marone.
Oh, you are there. Okay.
I'm back.
Thank you. You're keeping me on my toes of writing down the times you're there and not there for our minutes. Uh, okay. Motion by, motion by Marone. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderperson Holt House. Questions or comments?
Just a question for Rose. So this is just a name change, not a responsibility change for that position?
Uh, there actually was no job description for this position. So, um, this job description encapsulates what she's actually doing, that one. Um, so there wasn't, there wasn't no job description describing what she did before. So, yep, it is essentially just a mention. Um, I would note, because I think Alderperson Larson is going to ask, because this is a reclass, it's a different position, that is why you're seeing this one here as well, besides the grade change. This is actually, um, a change in the name, which changes the position. So...
Any other questions?
So just so I understand, because I feel that those terms mean different things. So having a change to the paralegal position is more of an assistant to you without being an actual attorney? Is that correct?
It is paralegal. So a legal assistant is more clerical, I would say. Uh, paralegal is kind of what you're, I think what you were trying to say, as close to being an attorney as you can be without practicing law. I'm breaking the law, if that makes sense.
Okay. Yeah, because paralegal, I understand when the military is used as research assistants. So you do a lot of the legwork for the attorney without actually being the attorney.
Correct. Same here, paralegal draft documents will create things. A legal assistant would like to petition for a document as opposed to creating it themselves.
Any other...
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Alyssa?
Marone?
Aye.
Kels?
No.
Muddler?
Aye.
Portimasi?
No.
Britton?
Aye.
Larson?
No.
Holt House? Aye. Baker?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carried, six-three.
Thank you. Uh, all right. Next is comments and suggestions. If there's anyone on the line that would like to comment? Okay. And I don't see anything in the chat feature. So with that, I'd like to congratulate us for making it through our first city council meeting this way. I appreciate you guys working with us in the growing pains. We are getting better each time. So, um, with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Motion, Schmidt?
I'll second. Rather?
Seconded by Rather. And we are, we can do a voice vote on this one. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Almost. All right. Thank you, everyone. Please stay safe, and we will talk real soon.